Hi, good evening and welcome to the Monday, March 7th, West Claremont Board of Education Work Session. Mr. Romano, will you call us into order, please?
Yes. Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
President.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy did let us know he was unable to attend this evening.
Great, thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a considered republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two community members that would like to speak before the board meeting this evening. First, I will call for Cheryl Arajima. Please come to the podium and state your name, address, and the topic that you wish to discuss. You have three minutes. Mr. Romano will be starting the time, and we will not address any issues regarding school operations or individuals by name. Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Arajima. I live at 9 Flamingo Court, Amelia, Ohio, and I've lived in the West Claremont District for over 20 years. Also, a little bit my background, I've been teaching Cincinnati Public for over 30 years. So I have some knowledge of the way schools run. I've been at Taft High School for 28 years. And to speak on the incident of today's activity at the high school, my question is, why do not we have metal detectors in our schools? In my school, we've had them for over 10 years. It has kept us safe and secure. Why are they not here in West Claremont? We need metal detectors. That should not have happened today. And if they had metal detectors, it wouldn't have happened. So that's my question to you. What are we doing about that?
Great, thank you. Your question will be addressed by Mrs. Adams, but your questions and comments have been noted. Thank you. Next, I would like to ask Kelly Thorgerson to please come to the podium. State your name, address, and the reason for your topic. You'll have three minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Kelly Thorgerson. Do I have to state my address?
Yes, please.
866 Gorham Drive. I'm in -- I have multiple children in the district, and I'm here to ask you to add to your agenda to focus on the safety of our children. I'm asking you to be proactive, not reactive, and to reform some of your policies and programs, and to hold students accountable. So the elephant in the room tonight is the incident of the high school student arrested today with possessing a gun and ammunition, I believe. This child has been suspended multiple times for fighting. Many parents like me feel the mass email sent out today was carefully worded to soften the narrative, what was differently told to us by our children at school. My child was down the hall when this happened. Even if the email is perfect as written, the student, if not for the student who informed the school official today what was going on, it seems like today's outcome would be much different. With your safety protocols and roundtable exercises being practiced, I want to ask, why was there no lockdown today? Why were the students not notified immediately that he was taken into custody? I fear this issue will be swept under the rug, and the student will be back at the high school soon enough, because this isn't my first safety concern of one of my children being at school. Earlier in the year, my middle schooler was physically threatened and verbally threatened twice within the same day. What ended up happening? The aggressor student was suspended out of school for five days, two days of ISS, and that's it. The student violated your policies numbered 5500 and 5517.01, and is actually still in the same lunchroom as my child. The only response given is always, "I cannot give you any information." So I want to know whose rights you are protecting. At the elementary levels, they remove the entire classroom when a student is badly behaving and keep them in the class. In high school, next to my child, children smoke jewels and vapes all day long under their desk during class. Something with these examples is wrong. We need to get back to the basics. The severity of the situations and repercussions seem to be part of a lenient program or policy. Students who hold this behavior cannot be mainstreamed into the normal school schedule and cannot be assimilated back into the safe school culture without sacrificing the safety of our students and our teachers. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Patton, the newest board member, is a Claremont County Sheriff. He should be an invaluable asset to you to look and update our safety programs.
20 seconds remaining, please.
West Claremont has given a lot of money to contact trays and put in plastic dividers to stop a virus. I'm sure we can find a way to allocate money for metal detectors, more resource officers, and do drug sweeps. The district enrollment numbers seem to be too large to control, and this is not a good reputation for West Claremont to continue to carry. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 4.0, superintendent's business?
Yeah, we have a lot of business to discuss today, and I will certainly address today's events. I'll do that later in the meeting, so we'll take some -- we're going to keep our agenda going. And that begins with Megan Lawson. She's going to come forward and share a demo of our tool called Community Share. You guys have heard about it, but you haven't seen it in action. And part of what we've been spending time doing several times in February, really since October, we've been engaging with our community members to get more connected with us, to make sure that the learning goes beyond the four walls of the school, and that we are creating more authentic activities for our students to do. And one tool that we're using, I call it like a matchmaking tool, is to connect classroom teachers with real-life partners. And Megan's going to show you today how this tool works, and our goal over time is just to continue to get more and more names in here. And Tammy, for instance, if you would put your name in there, you would also write down areas of interest for you. You would write down that you're involved in Cincy Kids for Kids, that you play an HR role. So you talk about all the different aspects that you have to offer, and then if teachers in classrooms are studying certain skill sets or have certain needs, then that would trigger a connection with you, and there'd be a matchmaker. And so the teachers, by the automation of this tool, will reach out to you and say, "Hey, we're doing this event on October 3rd. Would you be a guest speaker in our class?" As an example. And so Megan's going to demo it, so you guys can see it live. And one of the things I wanted to show you is just the community storytelling, because part of it is, you know, when everything's digital, you don't always see the end result. And one piece of Community Share is that there's a storytelling component, where you capture pictures and videos and events, so that the community can see exactly how our classrooms are changing. So Megan, I'll give you.
Wonderful. Yes, I'm excited to share this with you. So I went ahead and skipped to that storytelling element here, and you can see how there's many tiles that show examples of -- these are not our particular projects, these are examples that they've given us from other schools, but we'll have our own stories to tell, to give people more ideas of the different ways that they might partner together. And so if I were to click into one of these, you'd first see that if you're interested in bringing mentors in, or career prep opportunities, or speakers, you know, you could look at this example and learn more. This one about living on the moon. And then there's a whole narrative summary that describes the project itself. There's pictures of the students, and then you can see the age groups that it supports and the various areas that you may be interested in, the different levels, I should say, you might be interested in partnering. And then here's some related subjects as well. So really a great way to tell the stories of our community and the partnerships that we can do with teachers in classrooms. Now, if I were to scroll over to partners, I want you to see that we have our partners continuing to sign up. So you can see names that you may recognize of partners in our community. We have over 13, but we have more that will be rolling in. And you can see their profile picture, and they've identified their skills and experience, others, areas of interest, the age groups that they may want to work with, and then activity types that they might be interested in. And then you can invite people one of two ways. You can invite them directly, because you see something really compelling about their profile, or you can put out a -- maybe you don't have a specific partner in mind, but you want to make your request as a teacher. I can just say I'm ready to make a request. And then I just want to show you just how many possibilities there are. I'm going to say career prep. If I scroll down here, you can see so many different ways that it gives you to partner. Apprenticeships and career days, career fairs, maybe it's a class challenge or competition, a demonstration, an informal interview, or internship, job fairs, job shadows, mock interviews, resource fairs, science fairs, speakers, speaker panels, tours, volunteer opportunities, and more. So it really gives you some ideas that you might not have even had originally as a teacher when you make that match. And then, of course, if you make a match with that individual, they'll, of course, like go through all of our protocols for making sure that they're approved to be somebody who could come into a classroom if they're coming into our school. And you can also, you can partner virtually. There's so many different ways to get involved. And so there's educator profiles and community partner profiles. Let me just show you, just I'm so proud of this group of educators that are the pioneers that are getting into this first. We've got a group of over 30 teachers, K through 12, who are going on this adventure of partnering with a community partner this school year, and then we'll have a compelling story to tell on this platform. So let me just show you, because I want to highlight them. You can see some of their names, and I want to see if I can find a picture of a teacher that working on getting their profiles up. You can see we've got Lacey Walker from the middle school, Angela Fallhaber, one of our coaches, Heather Frost. So over 30 teachers are going to be going on this adventure, and then we're hoping to get more and more people into the fold. Other things that you would like for me to spotlight tonight, Natasha?
Well, if you could just tell them a little bit more about the fellowship that those teachers are a part of, and kind of just pull them in a little bit.
Sure. So this group of 30 or so teachers, coaches, we've got a counselor in the mix, they're really studying student engagement and what it would look like to have a student-centered learning ecosystem. And so there are really two main outcomes that will come from our work with these teachers. One is to connect with a community partner, to try to make learning relevant and authentic and meaningful for students, to solve like actual, real challenges, and to tap into the interests that kids can feel like they don't have to wait till they're grown up to make a difference, we can make a difference now. And we can make it a connection between our content and the skills that we need students to learn, and that difference that we can make with the community. We're actually going to be able to measure whether or not student engagement grows when they have authentic experiences, because we're trying out a new tool to measure student engagement. So they're going to be collecting some data about their classes before they go on this journey with this partnership, and then throughout the partnership, to see what changed about the story in terms of, did student engagement increase? Did their sense of hope and belonging and interest in the classroom grow as a result of these kinds of learning experiences? And if so, what can we learn from that, and how might we expand that impact, you know, further across our school system?
So what do we need from you? We need you to fill out your profile. And this is your homework. Find five more people between now and the end of the year, so five more partners, people in your network, people that you're connecting with would like to be our partners. So with your help, we will be able to expand our list even further. So you just got public homework. That's a lot of pressure. And I'm not putting it in school energy or anything, I'm just telling you, you have to remember.
And it's very easy for them to create a profile. It'll guide them through the process. They just need the URL, so you can share the link with them directly.
We'll make sure we send it back out at you, so you don't have to dig for it, too. So that's that. Thank you, Megan.
My pleasure.
Okay, as Dan gets -- do you guys have any questions? I kind of rushed over that. Any questions for you guys?
I think this is going to be great, but we're early in this with them, right? Like this is something that's new in general.
Oh, well, this is a tool that's used right now in Arizona. Like it's been used for a long time there. That's where this company is and the originator of this. He was looking to scale in Ohio, and we've been selected as a school district that has promising hope to actually make this happen. So he has selected us and is supporting us, along with another consultant we're working with, to bring this to life here. So we feel very fortunate that he trusted us enough with his tool, with his pride and joy, to bring here and to create a name for it. And our hope over time, truly, is that all the Claremont County schools want to be a part of it, all the Hamilton County schools, maybe over in Northern Kentucky, because the bigger it is, the more powerful it is. And so it's not just about West Claremont kiddos, it's about engaging our entire community, our entire world, to help open opportunities that you just don't think of if you're just thinking about your street, your yard. We want to grow people's thinking about the possibilities, so. And, you know, now that engaging virtually is like so normal for everybody, you could be a partner of ours in Columbus, you could be a partner in India, like it doesn't matter where you are, in ways that maybe we weren't so open-minded to that just a few years ago.
What is the cost associated with this?
Do you guys remember? Because it's not on the top of my head right now.
I can confirm the number.
Okay, we'll look it up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to move on then. Dan, if you'll pull up the --
The Batel.
That one, yes. So part of our work is with Batel for Kids. It's a company that focuses on bringing the 21st century learning environment and practices and beliefs to life, to help us really grow. They're kind of, they're the company that is throughout the entire state and beyond, in all the 50 states, working to get schools to create a fortunate graduate that has a strong vision for how they want to see students once they complete their high school experience. And what I want to share with you, we're not going to look at this whole slideshow from top to bottom, but I want to hit just some highlights before we get into our conversation today. This is all meant to like ready your mind with what we need to be considering as we look at the changes that we want to make in the future, whether we're talking about facilities, we're talking about our learning environments, the programming that we might offer, or anything from transportation to the staff, mental wellness, health and safety. So, Dan, I'm just -- oh, you gave your answer.
Or I can go.
This is great. So this gives you just a little bit about the beliefs of Batel for Kids, and it really does match exactly, it aligns exactly with the kinds of things that we believe in our school district. So why consider these landscape shapes, shifts? That's what this entire presentation is really about, is about understanding, how's our world changing from the context of four different areas, so that we can answer this question. Is every student in our district experiencing a deeper 21st century education? You can kind of see, just looking at, you see the black and white photo of traditional learning of math, science, English, and social studies alone, and you see the colorful image and somebody working with a robot, looking at deeper learning, content mastery, developing empathy, creative thinking, adaptability, and collaboration. And there's not a article that you can read about the future of work that doesn't reflect those deeper learning skills on the right-hand side. So how are we doing this in West Claremont? How's this working? So we're going to hit a few topics here. We're going to look at what's happening in the workforce, what's happening with the pace of change, we're going to take a global look, and look at human interaction. And as I said, there's a lot of slides in this deck, we're not going to hit all of them tonight, but we'll keep referring to them. Now, the future of work may have arrived sooner than anyone anticipated. The need to create better opportunities for all Americans once seemed like a long-term project, but the crisis has put that imperative into the present tense. And I think we've all experienced that, that things that seemed down the road, off the path, are now pulled forward, and something that we're experiencing every day, and it is impacting how we think about educating our students. So if you take a look, what do you guys notice about these top 10 workforce skills for 2025 as you look at the list?
Definitely stuff I didn't really tackle in high school.
Yeah, you don't, you haven't seen these on like a high school syllabus when we were in school, that's for sure.
Higher levels, yeah.
A lot of mental math going on, problem solving.
You'll see they're color-coded. Of the top workforce skills, the orange represent problem solving, the green is self-management, the purple, working with people, and the blue or bluish-greenish is the use of technology. In 2013, a Federal Reserve researcher found that 27% of college graduates were working in a job that matched their college major. 38% were in jobs that did not require a college degree at all. That is not to say that college degrees and the knowledge that comes with them are not worth earning. Yet today, 65% of all jobs require at least some education beyond a high school degree. And according to Georgetown University's Center of Education on the workforce, that it's true that despite several companies, including Google and Apple, that recently announced that they will no longer require a degree. So how intentionate are our current models of education to cultivate these skills? You will see, if you look at our fortunate graduate that's sitting in front of you, and you look up at those skills, do you guys see some overlap or some connection?
Yes.
Do you see something that looks, now that you're seeing this list of workforce skills for 2025, do you see something that looks like it's wildly missing from our vision? Or something we need to be thinking about?
I don't think so.
Okay. What's interesting, I think, as we look to those skills and knowing what we want to develop in a fortunate graduate, what's not changing? The state testing system, what's not changing? Fast enough, our report cards, and how we share this information? Because how do you, how do you measure those things that are listed on there? What does that look like?
Well, most of it isn't measurable.
Right.
And certainly not on standard testing.
And if these are the job skills that are needed, and we're called to be accountable, to be able to show that we are making progress with kids, that's the dilemma that educators face, that we have got to find a way to put some measurement behind this. And you heard Megan talk earlier, that one of the things we're going to be doing is advancing the measurement of just engagement itself. There's so many different ways. There's engagement of just paying attention, then there's cognitive engagement, there's different levels of that. Well, how do we know? We know more about brain science and the science of learning better than we ever have in history, but that hasn't necessarily translated to a standardized test or to a report card yet. And so those are things for us to continue to think about. 50% of all employees will need reskilling by 2025. So as you look at this, the Future of Jobs Report says that the Institute for the Future has predicted, based upon their research, that 85% of the jobs that today's students will do in 2030 don't exist yet. That might seem like a high number to reach in only nine years, but think about the now mainstream careers that did not exist just a handful of years ago. Drone operator, social media manager, app developer, wind turbine technician, and cloud computing engineer, among others. Even if that 85% is ultimately smaller, the number begs an important question about how the workforce is preparing for the future, starting in our classrooms. Now, do you, what connections could you, do you see here either to your work or to what you see the work of teachers when you look at 50% of all employees needing reskilling by 2025? What do you think the implications are there?
I know in my own personal career, I've been in my job situation for 30 years, and we didn't have computers when I started. Everything was very manual, just the, I'm a pharmacist, so the number of drugs that, you know, you learned about 30 years ago versus what is available and the medical advancements that we've made. I know in my situation, in my profession, we're very fortunate that we are required to do continuing education, but that still doesn't get you to where you need to be. You have to be continually learning, and I've seen it in my own, with my own children who've graduated from the district, is, you know, the things that were put before them and how they're implementing things in the workforce now, it's very different. They're charged with so much more, and it's very stressful for them, and if we can help to, you know, bridge that gap, it would be amazing.
It's hard to teach a skill to something that you don't know what the career is going to be.
Yeah. That's what, we talk a lot about that, about transferring, like what can you learn now that is transferable versus something that you're memorizing and it's transferred to a test on Friday, versus something you can retool in a new context. And that's really the challenge of educating 21st century kiddos. When you look at previous workers from 25 years old to 50 years old, maybe two to three jobs in their careers, whereas you're looking at 18 to 42-year-olds, 10.4 jobs in their year. So becoming a, leaving college or leaving a post-grad something to prepare for a job used to be enough to kind of get you through your entire career with some little, you know, PD along the way. This takes constant retooling, reinventing, and being a lifelong learner. The way Batel breaks everything down, it kind of shows the workforce needs of how the economy changes. We think about from the agricultural age to the industrial age, to information and computer age, and high concept, high touch, which is the area we're in now. And so I think about a classroom, if you just close your eyes and picture it, you kind of picture a teacher, rows of desks, and a chalkboard. Then you picture a teacher, rows of desks, and a whiteboard. And then you picture teacher, rows of desks, and a smartboard. What has really changed?
Teacher, no desks, computer.
Yeah. So, and so now we are having computers in the room, but what, layering these different innovations on, what is that, what's really changed? And so that, that's really the question. I'm not saying that nothing has changed, because clearly, for some to come into a classroom, it would seem unrecognizable compared to when they were in school. But the, but the standard way we do things has had very little change when you think about what really, in each of those little boxes, what it really represents. In this high-concept, high-touch age, which I don't, I've never really heard a phrase like that before, I don't know if you guys, if that comes up in your work or whatever, but it's about having, it's the intellectual, it's about, it's like bringing out the best in humans, and the high touch, it's the service, it's the human, it's the caring, it's the empathy, it's what your industry is of caring for patients. It's how high-tech, human touch come together. That's what that's really all about, and how we figure that out. So you can, just this image alone kind of blows your mind. So one of the things I think is most notable to call out, because it's hard to, you know, we're not trying to do that, the robots are taking the world over, and they aren't going to be in jobs anymore for anybody anymore. That's not really, that's not what we're saying. But there is the world of automation and routine tasks being taken over by, by robots in some cases. And so if you take a look at this chart, you can see that we're shifting out of less routine jobs to not, to more non-routine jobs. So that's making us need more knowledge, need to be able to make decisions in unique situations, having a nonlinear process, not a just follow the bouncing ball or follow the recipe. And you can see in this chart right here, that since 2001, the rise of non-routine jobs kind of taking off, whereas routine jobs going down. And so I think that's pretty significant, because our schools do a great job preparing kids for routine jobs. That's what the factory model is built on, that's what we were designed for. And without a huge disruption in that design, we're still doing a really good job at that when the need clearly is changing. So if we're focused on improving standardized test scores, do we limit what nonlinear tasks students are exposed to? And that's just really a question to ponder, we don't have to answer it right now, but it's knowing that the state system But it's knowing that the state system remains the same. But I don't know if you hear some of the biggest colleges, most known colleges right now are saying goodbye to ACT SAT. And that's not how the kids are getting into, to school anymore. That's, it's more of an afterthought versus the defining gatekeeper. So you're starting to see already since COVID a shift. And so what's that going to mean for our state system? I don't know. But this is where educators often have the challenges, like you're telling me my evaluation and this test that we do in the spring is all based on this, but you want me to be over here doing things that are innovative and getting people to think differently and working with robots. It's a, it's a split world, it doesn't make sense in people's heads. It's like, we got to be one way or the other. And so we're trying to figure out how do you, when you're living in the middle, how you bridge that gap?
Don't we currently have classes that are teaching our basic math, English? And then we also have our, we partner with the Oaks that are doing the technology, doing the robotics, doing those kind of things. So they're kind of getting the best of both worlds? Are we not already kind of in that, on that path?
Well, we're, we're kind of like living right in the middle. It kind of depends, it depends on what choices you make. In some choices, there's a plethora of options and some there's, it's more limited. So it just depends. And so what we're looking for is how do you broaden these opportunities for, for all kids? So that doors and, and windows don't close on them too soon, that we keep everything as open, open, open as possible. So yeah, it's not like all or nothing, but it's just, it's about access to, to these opportunities. So I think what we'll do is stop on, let me quickly look and just see if there's anything else that I specifically wanted to highlight tonight so that we can shift into our, our bigger conversation. There's four, there's three other categories, it's just a lot of information. So we'll, we'll come back to it as we continue these conversations. But what we're going to ask you to do now is that you shift into, you were given a folder, and in that folder is an article. There's something in there about the future of work or it's about students' mental and physical health and staff's mental and physical health. And take some time now, we're going to read that article and then we're going to shift down to these stations. So I'll have the cabinet, you guys can come on up. Ellie has some more articles if anybody in the audience wants to join in on the reading with us. But we will shift so that each board member will get a chance at each station to kind of talk through the big idea of the five topics that we have for each tonight. We have configuration of schools, which is about what kind of grade level configuration do we want to be in? Or is there, are we looking to online learning or a hybrid version of learning? So that's what that discussion is going to be about. Transportation is to take a wide look at transportation. Two hot topics in our district, obviously, is related to middle school start time and high school transportation. So you'll have some time to talk about that. And the area of facilities, we know we have some buildings that haven't been addressed. Merwin, West Fairmont Middle School and Holly Hill. And we know we have a growing preschool, so what, what does that mean in terms of facilities? Educational programming, what opportunities, as Ryan was asking, like, don't we have some of these things? Yes. Do we have it systematized from PK to 12? Are there some ways we can improve? Yes. And so what, what would our community be interested in? And then finally, staff wellness, student wellness and safety. So you guys are going to read your article, take just a few minutes just to get in the mode of thinking about the implications of the future. We will, we'll talk a little bit about what you're seeing in your reading and how it might apply to any of these topics. And then you guys will go down and we'll start that exercise. So right now, everyone can just, it's happy reading time. Just take some time to reflect on those articles. And if cabinet, if you guys didn't get any articles, Ellie has some that she can pass out to you. Or you also have them electronically in the board agenda. So we'll take about, I don't know, five or so, five to eight minutes to do the reading. And then we'll move into some discussions. Oh, got it.
So take another minute just to kind of scan or to wrap up your, your reading. It's okay if you didn't get all the way through. Okay, so just to kick off our conversation, is there anything that you guys read that you think has implications to our work? Whether it's about any specific topic or just something that we need to be thinking about as we plan for the next five years and beyond?
Like it looks like they did studies on these deltas and I guess had a pretty big test audience. I'm not sure about that, but is that something that we're going to be doing?
Um, studying delta, like what?
Why should we do that?
He had a different article. He had something different.
Like they break down these-
Everybody had something different.
I was lost also, I'm like-
In these different categories, they call it deltas.
Yes.
And if you're higher in certain deltas, it means you're better, could be better in certain situations. And education doesn't necessarily make things better, but yeah, well, I mean, it breaks it all down. Are we going to be like, be going deep into something like that to research our students or?
What do you, what do you think? I mean, what, what do you think's important? I, I think, I guess the question is, um-
I mean, it sounds like it would be beneficial, yeah.
Well, that might be, if that's something that's interesting to you, that you, that you think it fits one of the categories, I mean, it's definitely something that maybe we want to, we want to find out more. Does our community care about this? Does that matter to them? Is that a need? Is it not? I mean, those are the kinds of questions, so. That's something that's piqued your interest though. Okay, what about, what about for everybody else? Something that you read that you think has some implication to our, our future planning?
Yep. So my article was on the mental health of students. And suicide is a real thing. And there's so many of our population of students that are suicidal and having difficulties at home. And while we immediately think, you know, we're here to educate, education has become caring for a whole child and making sure that they are safe in whatever environment they're in. And I think that that is a priority for us as well to focus on. It goes beyond the suicide of themselves, but could they possibly be, you know, causing danger or harm to other students in their environment? So I think that that is on the forefront of things we need to be focused on and taking very seriously.
Thank you. Ryan?
Yeah, mine was just basically talking about how it's, schools are transitioning to not necessarily, we used to be the mindset that we had to graduate high school and go to college. And that's not necessarily the case. We knew we needed to graduate high school, but we could go to a trade school. We could do, there are other options that we could get into, into the workforce. And so it's just kind of the reshaping of that, of that mindset, of that idea.
Have you heard her say recently, educate, employ, or enlist?
Yeah, oh yeah.
That's our three's to, to say that educate is not the only path for our students. They're employing, they're enlisting as well.
Yeah, and in fact, we just had a huge, I guess job fair is what it was called, last Friday at West Cameron High School. There was over 25 booths there where students were able to look at summer job opportunities as well as future job opportunities, especially for the juniors and seniors. We had had this event last year, but it, it kind of came at the tail end of the year. And so we, we shifted the timing of it and it was a huge success. Randy was saying it was probably one of the best events that they've ever, they've ever had. And we're hoping a lot of kids get some employment out of it, so.
My son came home with tons of free stuff.
That's always a winner.
I said, "Where did you get all of this stuff?" He, he hit every one of the booths and-
Got to attract them somehow. So it just opens up their minds to opportunities and it keeps them from having to like drive all around town. It's like all right there and on Main Street and, and the community remains, so. Michelle, what about anything that you read where you see some connections?
Um, my article was about the future of work after COVID. And I, as I was reading this, I was, I've lived my article being in, in a healthcare setting. You know, people say, "How are you a pharmacist, but you work from home?" And it's talking about technology and how jobs are shifting to remote, you know, that, that hybrid of work at home, work in the office. It's also, you know, it's talking about how, um, how your, you know, you, you go to college or you go in, you know, go through your enlist or employ, different avenues. But how it's changing now because COVID has changed everything. Not just, you know, the technology piece of it, but how we shop, how we communicate, how we, um, how, you know, just how we get up every morning and, and everything that happens in between our day, start and finish of our day. So I think we just need to, you know, get our, it, it, it's also, you know, not just educating our children, but educating our families and our community. Because, you know, we were all educated a different way. And now we have, we have to do some re-education of everyone. So I think it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a fun ride, yes.
Well, I appreciate you guys taking time to dig into that, so now we'll shift. And the, the first goal of each booth will be to kind of overview the challenge as we're kind of shaping it. And what we'd like you to do is give feedback to that. If you would like it maybe phrased or focused on in a different way, we just need to, that kind of input from you. And we need to know ultimately, what is it that you want to know from the community about these things? Because all the work that we're doing is in preparation for the town halls and for the surveying that we're gonna be doing. So we want to have a real clear understanding of like, what is top of mind for you in this area? And then what you want to know more about, because this is all about listening. This is not about selling an idea or saying we're gonna do something out of one of these articles. Like it's, it's not about jumping on any one thing. It's about truly understanding where people are coming from and designing for the future by paying attention to all the things that we know are shaping the future and pulling us into this unknown world, so. So you guys can just go find, you know, fill in wherever you want to, wherever you want to start, and then I'll rotate you. You'll be in each booth about, about eight minutes, so. And you know what? We don't have, we have, we're down man, so that'll make it a little bit weird, but-
Maybe we'll break.
We'll figure it out, yeah. You can take a potty break or something, yes.
That's, that's the way we'll call it.
And, and we'll just have the board members rotate, so you guys can all stay situated with your technology. And I'll be a timekeeper and keep us moving. You guys don't have to start.
But what just so happens-
They're cute. I feel like I want to call there just to, uh, try for like- Okay, about one minute. About one minute. Okay, are you guys at a place where we can wrap up your, your section and then shift this way? Yeah, that way. To your right. Okay, it's time to shift. If we're gonna get all these topics in. So Michelle, you're gonna go over to, um, or Rhys. It is a little bit speed dating. You get a vibe?
Yeah.
We are very, 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 yes. Well, welcome. So we are- Just make sure we're all like kinda talking the same. It could be like portions, so whether it's a specific, simply a word or whatever.
So here's some stats. Recent projections.
First, I'm curious, like, you know, whether you think that bringing that question that way would be helpful in a sense?
So, um- Elementary, two, three, middle school, right, and high school, right, same, but that's not special. Especially in middle school and major. So then the last thing, part of the puzzle is how they're going to do it next three years. Seventeen hundred sixty-one. Year thirty-five, twenty-three, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-two, so we're hard to set. So the question is-
Yes. So I think it could be, so that's one example of, you know, how the situation for us is not happening. Day by day, like my experience. You're talking to two, uh, you're like-
Oh, I got you, I got you.
She's a shoo-in. Maybe in the bar, maybe sort of whatever.
Yeah, right.
Or hurting this thing. Yeah, that's okay. The community, that is different. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. But that's the point, point for, for learning, like, so just sort of seeing, you know, something that would- Yeah, that's true. But I do think that that's really good, like, even, I think it's hard, it's more challenging to answer what might be the other chat. If you're not, if you're not, you're not there. You guys are making snow go over here, everybody. Okay, it's time to rotate again. I'm going this way. We are rotating this way, yes. Yes. Right, I don't believe that, right? Okay. Oh, yeah, thank you. I need to do that. Hey, Ryan, will you listen to this? Because we have a, yeah. I have to do it now, rotation. I'm coming in David's table.
Can you do a last question?
I can't do my first question.
This is, this is not for saying, we're not testing. So you know that Vineville is-
It's like orbit a little, you know, better than I said was. And as we like define it, each program, that could be the whole different.
Here's the, here's a little bit of the question.
So, you know, experiences to-
The eternal, the eternal.
A more central part of it is like a course, but like-
Or a- And those buildings in particular.
So that's kind of how we're like thinking of it, defining it.
So here's some progression to grow. It's a big pull to ten years, approximately. More focused this, sort of, next few years. They could be great from eight to eight-five, eight-three. Okay, the elementary game, three hundred forty-one kids. Middle school, one thirty-nine, high school, seventy-five years of adult doubles. Elementary, seven twenty. Middle school, one ninety, high school, two hundred and twenty. And it's all been generated by supplementary courses.
seventy thousand, seventy-one thousand, seventy-two thousand, seventy-three thousand, seventy-four thousand, seventy-five thousand, seventy-six thousand, seventy-seven thousand, seventy-eight thousand, seventy-nine thousand, eighty thousand, eighty-one thousand, eighty-two thousand, eighty-three thousand, eighty-four thousand, eighty-five thousand, eighty-six thousand, eighty-seven thousand, eighty-eight thousand, eighty-nine thousand, ninety thousand, ninety-one thousand, ninety-two thousand, ninety-three thousand, ninety-four thousand, ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand, ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, twelve thousand, thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand, twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand, twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand, thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand, thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand, forty thousand, forty-one thousand, forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand, forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, forty-six thousand, forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand, forty-nine thousand, fifty thousand, sixty thousand, seventy thousand, eighty thousand, eighty-one thousand, eighty-two thousand, eighty-three thousand, eighty-four thousand, eighty-five thousand, eighty-six thousand, eighty-seven thousand, eighty-eight thousand, eighty-nine thousand, ninety thousand, ninety-one thousand, ninety-two thousand, ninety-three thousand, ninety-four thousand, ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand, ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand, ninety-four thousand, ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand, ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand, twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand, thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand, thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand, forty thousand, forty-one thousand, forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand, forty thousand, forty-one thousand, forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand, forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, forty-six thousand, forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand, forty-nine thousand, fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand, fifty-two thousand, fifty-three thousand, fifty-four thousand, fifty-five thousand, fifty-six thousand, fifty-seven thousand, fifty-eight thousand, fifty-nine thousand, sixty thousand, sixty-one thousand, sixty-two thousand, sixty-three thousand, sixty-four thousand, sixty-five thousand, sixty-six thousand, sixty-seven thousand, sixty-eight thousand, sixty-nine thousand, seventy thousand, seventy-one thousand, seventy-two thousand, seventy-three thousand, seventy-four thousand, seventy-five thousand, seventy-six thousand, seventy-seven thousand, seventy-eight thousand, seventy-nine thousand, eighty thousand, eighty-one thousand, eighty-two thousand, eighty-three thousand, eighty-five thousand, eighty-six thousand, eighty-seven thousand, eighty-eight thousand, eighty-nine thousand, ninety thousand, ninety-one thousand, ninety-two thousand, ninety-three thousand, ninety-four thousand, ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand, ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, twelve thousand, thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand, thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand, forty thousand, forty-one thousand, forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand, forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, forty-six thousand, forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand, forty-nine thousand, fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand, fifty-two thousand, fifty-three thousand, fifty-four thousand, fifty-five thousand, fifty-six thousand, fifty-seven thousand, fifty-eight thousand, sixty thousand, sixty-one thousand, sixty-two thousand, sixty-three thousand, sixty-four thousand, sixty-five thousand, sixty-six thousand, sixty-seven thousand, sixty-eight thousand, sixty-nine thousand, seventy thousand, seventy-one thousand, seventy-two thousand, seventy-three thousand, seventy-four thousand, seventy-five thousand, seventy-six thousand, seventy-seven thousand, seventy-eight thousand, seventy-nine thousand, eighty thousand, eighty-one thousand, eighty-two thousand, eighty-three thousand, eighty-four thousand, eighty-five thousand, eighty-six thousand, eighty-seven thousand, eighty-eight thousand, eighty-nine thousand, ninety thousand, ninety-one thousand, ninety-two thousand, ninety-three thousand, ninety-four thousand, ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand, ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, twelve thousand, thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand, thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand, forty thousand, forty-one thousand, forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand, forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, forty-six thousand, forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand, forty-nine thousand, fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand, fifty-two thousand, fifty-three thousand, fifty-four thousand, fifty-five thousand, fifty-six thousand, fifty-seven thousand, fifty-eight thousand, fifty-nine thousand, sixty thousand, sixty-one thousand, sixty-two thousand, sixty-three thousand, sixty-four thousand, sixty-five thousand, sixty-six thousand, sixty-seven thousand, sixty-eight thousand, sixty-nine thousand, seventy thousand, seventy-one thousand, seventy-two thousand, seventy-three thousand, seventy-four thousand, seventy-five thousand, seventy-six thousand, seventy-seven thousand, seventy-eight thousand, seventy-nine thousand, eighty thousand, eighty-one thousand, eighty-two thousand, eighty-three thousand, eighty-four thousand, eighty-five thousand, eighty-six thousand, eighty-seven thousand, eighty-eight thousand, eighty-nine thousand, ninety thousand, ninety-one thousand, ninety-two thousand, ninety-three thousand, ninety-four thousand, ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand, ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand, twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand, thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand, thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand, forty thousand, forty-one thousand, forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand, forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, forty-six thousand, forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand, forty-nine thousand, fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand, fifty-two thousand, fifty-three thousand, fifty-four thousand, fifty-five thousand, fifty-six thousand, fifty-seven thousand, fifty-eight thousand, fifty-nine thousand, sixty thousand, sixty-one thousand, sixty-two thousand, sixty-three thousand, sixty-four thousand, sixty-five thousand, sixty-six thousand, sixty-seven thousand, sixty-eight thousand, sixty-nine thousand, seventy thousand, seventy-one thousand, seventy-two thousand, seventy-three thousand, seventy-four thousand, seventy-five thousand, seventy-six thousand, seventy-seven thousand, seventy-eight thousand, seventy-nine thousand, eighty thousand, eighty-one thousand, eighty-two thousand, eighty-three thousand, eighty-four thousand, eighty-five thousand, eighty-six thousand, eighty-seven thousand, eighty-eight thousand, eighty-nine thousand, ninety thousand, ninety-one thousand, ninety-two thousand, ninety-three thousand, ninety-four thousand, ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand, ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, twelve thousand, thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand, twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand, twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand, thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand, thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven thousand, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand, forty thousand, forty-one thousand, forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand, forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, forty-six thousand, forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand, forty-nine thousand, fifty thousand, sixty thousand, seventy thousand, eighty thousand, eighty-one thousand, eighty-two thousand, eighty-three thousand, eighty-four thousand, eighty-five thousand, eighty-six thousand, eighty-seven thousand, eighty-eight thousand, eighty-nine thousand, ninety thousand, ninety-one thousand, ninety-two thousand, ninety-three thousand, ninety-four thousand, ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand, ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, twelve thousand, thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand, fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand, fifty-two thousand, fifty-three thousand, fifty-four thousand, fifty-five thousand, fifty-six thousand, fifty-seven thousand, fifty-eight thousand, fifty-nine thousand, sixty thousand, sixty-one thousand, sixty-two thousand, sixty-three thousand, sixty-four thousand, sixty-five thousand, sixty-six thousand, sixty-seven thousand, sixty-eight thousand, sixty-nine thousand, seventy thousand, seventy-one thousand, seventy-two thousand, seventy-three thousand, seventy-four thousand, seventy-five thousand, seventy-six thousand, seventy-seven thousand, seventy-eight thousand, seventy-nine thousand, eighty thousand, eighty-one thousand, eighty-two thousand, eighty-three thousand, eighty-four thousand, eighty-five thousand, eighty-six thousand, eighty-seven thousand, eighty-eight thousand, eighty-nine thousand, ninety thousand, ninety-one thousand, ninety-two thousand, ninety-three thousand, ninety-four thousand, ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand, ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand, ninety-four thousand, ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand, ninety-eight thousand, ninety-nine thousand, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, twelve thousand, thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand, thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand, The middle school, you know, used to be a very high school. And then the middle school connected. But what didn't happen was the lock rate. And we see walking, you know, all these kids together, so there's a mismatch. They are stopped in building that the university closes. To be kind of shopping, tell you the story. From my perspective, it's only one year, it's a fact, it's bad, yes, but that's what I mean, that's what I'm saying. Have you got program? What's the process? I mean, this is starting process.
These are things that. Absolutely.
It's, it's not on steroids.
Okay, time to wrap up those conversations. Okay, final minute, and you can make your way back up to the two chairs. It's your last group. Thanks, you guys. Hey, Dan, can you come get the slides up here? Thanks.
Keyword, almost. Wrecked my blanket at home.
I was gonna say. Oh, my seat's cold again.
Thank you.
Chair's cold.
That's what I just said, I said my seat's cold again.
Oh, here it is, it's hiding in my, that was my card thing.
You want the timeline, you want the timeline up?
Yes, please. So these are the five big areas of discussion that we are constantly having as a cabinet. And so you got the chance today to kinda like eat the whole elephant, kinda like we do. But you're probably starting to see the overlap. You can't just like talk about one topic without talking about another and then how it impacts another. And so we're trying to really take advantage of the next, I don't know, twelve to eighteen months to really do some long-term planning for our district. And these are the big areas of focus. And what I wanna just kinda give you guys a few more minutes, is there anything? Any reaction out of that time? Anything more you wanna talk about, questions you have? Any ahas or what's on your mind? Because our goal, again, is to make sure that A, you're understanding, like, the issues as we're framing them from our point of view, coupled with what is it that we need to know from our public? Because again, we're not, we're not trying to make all the decisions, package it, and deliver it. We're trying to stop first and listen and say, okay, the context has changed, the needs have changed. We know kinda what's happening in the future. We know we don't wanna stay where we are. And so what's it gonna look like to change? What's that really gonna mean? What, what, what do we have to let go of? And what do we have to embrace? And so just any, any comments or thoughts for the class?
It's kinda overwhelming the needs sometimes and getting all once-in-a-speaking styles.
Yeah, welcome to our life. It, it is a lot. And, and we'll continue to break it down because I know this was kind of like baptism by fire today, just to get a, get the big picture. And we'll keep going into it with these work sessions as we go. And as we collect more data from our community too. So hopefully the picture that feels really fuzzy right now will start to be clearer and clearer.
One of the things I kept saying and I kept, and I keep saying is, is that we need to make sure that we're getting to our community. And however we do that, and making sure that we're getting the vast majority of our community. And again, I know we've talked about this before, I don't necessarily know the answer, but again, we've talked about podcasts, we've talked about text messages, we've talked about emails. But again, when you're getting this information from our community, we need to make sure that we're getting as much as we can from our whole community when gathering this stuff.
Yeah, that's gonna be huge. And I think it's, it's not gonna be anymore like, okay, so the whole community got this. Who cares if my neighbor doesn't talk to me about it? If the person down the street at the, you know, the bus stop doesn't say, hey, did you see that thing? Did you tune into this? Like, there, there's going to have to be some more collective efforts with our staff as well as our parents to have some conversations beyond, beyond the norm, beyond the typical, to get people to come out. We have some strategies in place and plan to do that. But this has to be very different. I think it's gonna be one conversation at a time. And it's gonna be multiple medias. It's gonna have to be a video here, a podcast here, a face-to-face session here, something in the newspaper here. Like, there's not one medium that is going to attract all. So we have to keep hitting it from other points. And then we're gonna need district leaders to step up and help take this conversation further. Like, that, that's, there's just no way that just from our office or just from our chairs, is that gonna be enough to carry the day on this? Because these are big topics, these are big. So point well taken.
Piggyback off that, as we kind of try and find ways to, to move forward in the community and get their involvement, I don't wanna like overstep the students and what they think about all this. I think we should continually like tap in there as well.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll share this slideshow with you and, and then talk about some other examples. But we have a, we're gonna do a student town hall specifically at the high school. I'll do other events with the middle school and elementary, we just don't have any like on the, on the docket yet. Probably most of those will be planned for the fall. But that's gonna be a key piece of this. And students would also be welcome to come to the town halls. There's gonna be limited seating in some of them, like Holly Hill, for example, like, we've got some limited space. But we would certainly welcome, and our, and our plan, I have my back today, I'm sorry. Our plan is to have students, when we move these falls or these engagements into the fall, is that students would actually help host them. And that we're trying to get a group of students prepared to be, to help be a facilitator, much like how the cabinet members did today. And, and being able to share their personal experience, so.
Well, to piggyback off what you said, something that I made mention of on the curriculum, we can say what we think they wanna learn about. But it's important to hear the students and them telling us what interests them. And as long as it's part of the overarching state curriculum and everything, we should be teaching what they want to learn about.
And they're also more tapped into like what's going on anyway. Because like we talked about, we don't know what's going to be of the future for them, but they probably have a better idea than we do.
I just appreciate you guys saying that. I, I believe it so much, and I'm just so glad that you do. I just think it's huge for our district. I don't think every board sits and talks about that, I really don't, and I think it's huge.
My five-year-old, like, every day does stuff that I have no clue what he's doing. Like, I can't even help it there.
It's hard to stay caught up.
Yeah.
For that same reason, I've suggested numerous times that we consider adding a few students to, you know, sit with us on the board. You know, so that they're taking back information that they're learning from us. And we're learning from them as well as we're making decisions on what benefits them. Of course, they wouldn't be voting people and things like that, and wouldn't be an exact conversation. But for the business portion of things, I think it would be important to have their voice.
Well, and we had talked about starting to include them on sessions like this, on work session days, where they can get and have conversation. It's a little less formal in, in some ways, and there can be more kind of probing and tapping into like what their experience is. So we'll, we'll be able to do that. Any other takeaways or do you guys have any questions? Now that you've been able to listen to the different perspectives, is there anything more that you would say or ask? Or just comments?
I do think consistently student voice was something that especially not really across every. That I think thinking about these real perspectives, to reflect.
Well, I have two slides here that show kind of the rundown. Starting March fifteenth, we'll launch our first react survey, which will be a survey just to, to listen, to hear what's on people's minds in the areas of these four or five buckets. And that'll be a starting point. And as I was telling Tammy, like, we'll start with a lot of information up here, and then over time, we'll just continue to narrow it, narrow it, narrow it to the place where in about, I don't know, probably a year from now, we'll be at a place where we can offer scenarios to say like, here are some choices, these are some options, you know, you know, is this getting warmer, are we getting hotter? And exactly what you want or not? And so we'll be able to do that through this process. We'll do a student town hall in the end of March. The first official town hall will be at Holly Hill on the twenty-first. A hundred people will be able to fit for that one. And then our next one will be May third. Those will be basically identical events. In between those events, we'll have some focus groups and some listening sessions. So part of the surveys, when they go out, people will be asked, would you wanna be a part of a one-on-one conversation with the superintendent? Or would you wanna be part of a focus group? And if people say yes, we'd like that, we can invite them in for that. And then finally, early May, before everyone leaves for, for summer break, we'll launch another react. So it will take the information we learned through the Holly Hill and the Willowville Town Hall and narrow that information a little bit more and ask some more probing questions. And then that information will guide what happens for our fall engagements. So it'll be a process, and we'll bring you guys along the ride for that. If you can just slip to the next slide. And then this shows you how it progresses into next school year. We'll, we'll give you guys a strong update. Did you flip it? Okay, we'll give you an update in August, like where, status of the day, where are we? There will be a September town hall at the high school. Those same focus groups and one-on-one sessions will happen between October and December. And then they will ship, we'll have another react in November, another digital survey, so that you can engage face-to-face, you can engage digitally. And then we'll have a, a kind of a wrap-up of this segment of our work at the town hall in December. So they will not be identical sessions from the September to the December one. Those will, those will grow with, as, as the information grows and as things emerge. So, and, and likely, we'll, we're gonna test this out tomorrow. We should be, we're looking to be able to stream the Holly Hill event live. We'd like to do that for Holly Hill or for Willowville as well. So we're working on those technical aspects so that people who maybe aren't in the room can still feel like they get a, a piece of it. And we'll be very dedicated to making sure whatever we gather, within twenty-four, forty-eight hours, we'll have up on our website so people can see and that the, the process is very transparent in what we're learning and what we're hearing. So that's kind of the flow. Any, any questions or comments about that?
I mean, it might be cool to be able to visually show kind of some of the topics we're talking about. Like, if there was something held at Merlin, you could maybe show them the closet some of their kids are wearing.
Oh, oh, yeah, to like to bring it to life. Yeah, no, that's, that's a great idea. We, we certainly could start maybe pinpointing some of those things. That's another reason why we wanna get out into the buildings to have these moments, so people can see our environments and see what we're facing. Then I do think there are stories to tell in different nooks and crannies of the district to, to bring the story to life. So we certainly can do that. If you think of other places, maybe start jotting those down in shares with me, and so we'll get Jeffrey on a, you know, a video or something, possibly. And we will have a spot on our website where we just keep dumping this information so people can refer back to and kinda watch the journey with us, so. Okay, with that, that's all the parts for our, our kind of planning today for the town halls, unless you guys have anything else, I can shift into my comments. town halls unless you guys have anything else, I can shift into my comments. Well, you know, it's not typical that the day of a pretty big traumatic event happened that we're going live with the board meeting like that. It doesn't usually happen that quickly. And so I do have some thoughts here that I've been able to like quickly chicken scratch. It, it's not going to be beautifully worded. This is just kind of what's top of mind for me, what's on my heart and mind about today and, and, and really beyond today, based on some things that we've been facing over the last two years really. So if you'll just bear with me, this is a very emotional topic as you think about what our, our team members faced today. And so I just ask you, bear with me. Last week I was in an event. It was a Rotary event and there were three students presenting, representing West Claremont High School and they were phenomenal. I'll make sure that you get to meet them and, and hear more about them as we celebrate them. But at the end of the event, a community member asked each of the students to say like, what do you, what do you want from us? Like here we are, middle-aged people, some of us are community members, some of us live in your community, some of us don't. How could we help the next generation was the question. And so one of our seniors, this is what she said. She said, will you just listen to us? Not just hear our voice and not just give us a chance to speak, but would you just really listen? Like we have really good ideas and we have ways we want to see the world and, and things we want to change. Would you listen to us? And so it was a very passionate plea, very simple request, and the point was not lost on me. Today, I got a prompt in my email from the state of Ohio. It was in the middle of the day. It was an alert and that alert was related to our Ohio State testing. And so listen as you hear from one voice, one of our students that represent how so many feel. I want to go home. Life is hard. I need help. I suck. I'm not enough. I want a break from school. I wish I was home sick. Please give me time off. I wish I could just be younger again. Preschool was so nice. Please kill me now. I used to love school until now. Take me home. I want mom. Grandma said fourth grade was fun. Fourth grade, did you hear me? Fourth grade. Grandma said fourth grade was fun. Grandma's a big fat liar. I want my mom and dad. Life sucks. Tests are overrated. Help, it's only 2:40. Another hour left. I'm going to cry. Help, it's not fair. When will we need this? I want to go. I wish I told Mrs. Blank about my blank. I'm going to puke. I suck. Can I please leave? I wish I got breaks. School is horrible. I want to go back to Universal Studios. Why am I alive? What is my purpose? I've been doing this for 105 minutes. I hate myself. Why? Let me die. She said 90 minutes. Why do we need a practice test? I want my mom. I'm not capable. I got two of these kinds of emails today. And this is alerted to me because it's something that one of our students wrote. Instead of answering the question to the test, this is what they wrote. Our kids are in crisis. Now I turn to today's event at the high school, a day that no parent or educator ever, or you know, appraise, it would never happen. I'm incredibly proud of the student who was brave, who did the right thing, even when nobody was watching, who reported to the adults in the school, the danger that was being faced. And I am grateful for the decisive leadership and swift action from our principal and his admin team. This was acted upon in a very fast fashion, in the safest way possible, with incredible courage and action. And I don't know where we'd be without our partnership with, with UT Police because we can always count on our team of SRO Tony Metzger and SRO Steve Siegbert. What I want families to know is that as a team, we will be reassessing our processes and procedures as we always do. Every time there's an event, there's an after-reaction review where we analyze and work for continuous improvement. There will always be things that we can improve, but the actions today of our administrators, our leaders, our police department save lives. We want our families to know that we'll have additional police present at the schools tomorrow and we have to do it in a very delicate way. Like you, you don't want to just add a bunch of cruisers or a bunch of people and to make him feel even more threatened. So there's just always a delicate balance in presence and response without heightening other anxieties. We have our counselors ready to speak with students tomorrow. They've cleared their calendars in the morning if they have concerns or worries. And we have the crisis unit on call, ready to come in if they are needed. Something that I want to be really clear about tonight is that today was a day that was out of the norm. It was extremely difficult and it was extremely difficult, especially for the people directly involved. In fact, it's their worst nightmare. And we take this very seriously and we have responded accordingly. And yet, various degrees of kids in crisis are becoming as regular as pizza and fries on the lunch menus across our schools in our nation. Not only in our county, not only in our city, not only in our state, but across the entire nation. And we're just, we're not immune to it. The impacts of what's happened is not something that is, it's, it's universal. And so all last week at different times, we have reportings of self-harm cutting, students' inability to solve conflict well, poor conflict skills, stress, challenges with self-regulation, anxiety, depression, threats. And since the pandemic, what I, I can remember being a middle school principal, so this would have been back in like the 20, 2008, nine, 10 kind of era. And I remember talking to my colleagues about the things that were happening at the middle school at that time were things that were like, oh my gosh, this used to happen when I worked at the high school, but this was not like a middle school thing. So things started to trickle down. Kids being exposed to different things and everything the internet has to offer being something now is, is planting seeds in the minds of middle schoolers. Well, what I would say today is that same thing, or the same kinds of things that I was worried about back in 2007, eight, nine, happening in a middle school is happening in first and second grade. And, and COVID-19 and the pandemic and what it has done to our whole world has just, has elevated that. And, and the, and the hard thing, and this was something I was talking to one of our administrators about the other day, is that you can deal with an issue with a student during the day and the experience you have with the parent that, that night is the exact experience you have with the kid during the day. That adults are having a hard time coping, wrestling with conflict and getting over their fears and anger coming to the top of the surface in a, in a snap. And in all of this, what we're finding more and more is that students are, they're just, they're disengaged with school. I was recently at the middle school and a middle school teacher said to me, you know, Mrs. Adams, like everything sounds good on social media. We look awesome. We look great. Everything's wonderful in West Claremont if you're looking at social media, but it doesn't feel that way right now. So this is obviously after a really hard day. And I just joked and said, yeah, I don't put up billboards to announce, you know, every, every, you know, wart that we have. And I don't share these things tonight with you guys to share and, and to put a negative light on West Claremont because as I said, these, these issues are not West Claremont issues. These things are happening, any town, any school USA. I'm not making light of any of it. I'm just saying it's, these are not just school issues. These are, these are grand global scale issues that we have to work to understand. When I think back, I think back to, oh my gosh, it's like almost 24 months. We have to better understand the impact of what it meant to eject us from school in 2020 on a dime. And then for us to come clawing back, fighting with everything that we have, doing everything in our power to return, to then try to flip a switch and just say, okay, let's, let's try to be normal for the kids. Cause you know, in all the training that you go through, it's normalcy is the way to like get people back on track, normalcy. But getting to normalcy has been one of the hardest, most difficult things that we've ever had to do. And I'm not even sure normal of the past is even that great of a destination. And it's taken a toll on all of us. And so that's why tonight, when we're talking about all these issues and all these things ahead of us, it doesn't mean I, my head is stuck in the sand and all I can think about is five years from now and I can't live in the present. It's I'm living in both. I'm living in today and I'm living in, what are we going to do about this? And so I want to stress that the kinds of topics that exist at each of these tables today and what happened in our school today and now what we're seeing manifest in little tiny ways all the time is something that's not a spectator sport. People cannot sit on the sidelines and just kind of look in and kind of watch it happen. This is, this has to be an all-in, involved activity. We need families looking in backpacks. We need families looking in cars. We need families having conversations around the dinner table. We need families giving us a heads up when they're saying that something is not quite right. This is not me to, to create a, a finger pointing moment to say, well, this is a family's problem. I'm just saying that's some of the family's to-dos. Inside of school, we've got to have real relationships with these kids. We've got to connect with them at the deeper level. We've got to unstress our whole workforce so that we can connect with kids and get rid of the pressure cooker environment that a state testing system brings to the table and help everyone be the best they can be, the healthiest version of themselves as they're, as they're coming to work and educating our students. And so I, I, I share all this to say that we truly have an opportunity here. And again, it's really tricky when something as raw and as heavy as what happened today just happened because it makes every word I say, everything that comes out of my mouth could end up, I don't know. It, it could be something that sparks a negative thought and maybe is misinterpreted, misunderstood. So I have to, I have to be so careful. But, but what I want to say here is that we, we have an, an opportunity here that yes, we're like many, many schools across the nation, facing real big challenges with our students from the very itty-bittyest to the seniors ready to go out into the world. But we have a chance to be a district and a community that responds and resets like no other community. Because you see across the nation, you see across newscasts all the time. It's just people being against other people, nastiness, anger and politics taking over what's happening in schools. When what we need is for everybody to collectively come together, to listen to one another, to really understand, have empathy and to, to figure out, how has your work life changed? How has school life changed for you? How has your social life changed? How's home life changed? And how can we work together to reset? And that's what all this work is about. There is no magic bullet. There is no low-hanging fruit, one little tiny thing we can do and it's going to magically make things better. It's, it's going to be an all-out effort. And I can't talk about this without being really clear that this means we're going to have to let go of doing things in ways we've done them in the past. We're going to have to grieve the loss of some things so we can breathe oxygen to other things and bring new ways of doing work into life. And we have to do it realizing and remembering that to create a learning environment where students thrive, where they can be ready for the future and be competitively advantaged because of their experience in our school system, that we have to remember that we spend in the very bottom of what schools spend in all of Ohio. And that spending means that we have stretched our dollars, that we are efficiently staffing and that we are doing more than, with less. And, and then there are some areas, especially in, especially in this realm of behavior and student services and all of that, that we're, we're really at our capacity in many, many ways. And so it's going to take the ingenuity, the creativity of our community, everybody coming together to solve these complex and complicated challenges. And so this is really my plea to say, we're going to, we're going to each day get better at what we do. We're dedicated to this and Tuesday matters, Wednesday's mattering and we're not going to lose sight of what's in front of us, but we also have to, to get ahead, to look ahead. And I'm just asking that the community, the families, the staff and the neighborhoods, the business leaders, that everyone come around this table and realize that our kids need us. They need us all in more than ever. And then it's going to take all of us. There's no magic bullet here. There's no magic solution. There's nothing that we can buy that can make all this better. We, we have to work as a, as a united community, doing things for kids in ways that we've never imagined doing. And I, I won't keep, I won't keep rambling. Again, I, I hope that nothing that I said was something that was offensive in any way as I don't take today lightly at all. I'm so grateful that we are able to stand here and talk about everyone being safe and being okay. But it really is a, is a moment, a line in the sand moment for people to, to look and to really reflect on how, you know, that, that same, it takes a village. Like we all have to come together to raise these kiddos and they, they need us. And we're, we're doing everything that, that we know how to do and have the ability to do and we're going to keep learning and we need our community to wrap around and do that with us. That's all I have. So if you guys have questions or comments for me before we move on to, to board comments?
Treasure.
Oh, sorry, treasure. He was the treasure. He's behind me. I was slightly out of line. I apologize. I'm still not used to you going after me. So it's a rhythm thing. So I apologize. Just questions for me and then we'll move to Dan.
I appreciate everything that you just said. I think our staff did a fantastic job today.
They did. They really did.
Yeah, I agree. Like when I heard the news, the first thing I thought of was like my own children. Cause I feel like that's usually what pops in your head. But it's like, if my child was in that position, I wouldn't want that situation. I mean, I want those people to do what they did and they did it well. So, yeah.
So I obviously can't personally speak to how the, the situation was handled. The pieces that I can speak to is the communication piece of it. For me, I know that communication and timing is everything. And I know that everybody's got their roles and what they're doing. But the communication piece, I, I got it from my kids before I got it anywhere else. And I would hope that giving it, we got to get ahead of that and getting that communication piece out. The other piece is we debrief and we move forward. What, when we look at our safety piece of it, unfortunately they left beforehand, but I'd like to, to make sure that we're taking a look at our drills. Are we doing our Alice drills? How often are we doing them? Are we in compliant with that? You know, we do fire drills and we do safety drills. We have to make sure that we're in compliant with those things. And just making sure that we do there. The biggest thing here that I've learned over my tenure and, and what I do is, is exactly what I believe you said at the beginning is the relationship. Most of my stuff was resolved at my school in the district was because of the relationships that I built with the kids. The kids felt comfortable that they could come tell me things and they did come tell me things. And so that's the important piece. Again, I don't speak to the high school. I don't know what the relationship is there, but that's the important piece is to make sure that we have those relationships. And again, you've spoken of that before. So those are just some of the things that I looked at. Like I said, the communication piece, which is still, there's still some concern out there with, with different Facebook pages and stuff as far as the communication, how it got out. But that's the piece when we sit and we debrief about it, that, that, you know, I'm getting it from my kids before I'm getting it from anywhere else. And it's important to get ahead of it. Today's social media, these things are going. Screenshots of, of different things out and other incidences that have been out. So that's a, and that's why I had, like I said, I believe it was handled appropriately. I have full confidence in, in our staff at the high school and I have full confidence in Union Township. So I don't have any concerns with that piece of it.
I want to add on to that though. From a parent's perspective inside the building, like yourself, I think the kids are so involved because they're there. You know what I'm saying? They're acutely aware of their surroundings and what's going on. And as a parent, I would prefer you to take care of the situation and then communicate to me as a parent afterwards.
She's not taking care of the situation. My principal was in the.
No, I'm just saying, take care of the situation first and then communicate second. Not that communication is not important, it's that the security and the safety of everyone is paramount. I'll learn about it in due time, if that makes sense. everyone is paramount. I'll learn about it in due time, if that makes sense. I'm not disagreeing with you.
No, it does. But again...
I'm just saying from a different perspective.
But if we're not careful, and we're learning it about it from our kids and from here, we're left to worry about what is going on. Again, there was an incident that took place at the middle school that we had to learn about it on Facebook. You know, I saw posts that firemen's were busting down our roofs, and we had a fire alarm and this and that. That didn't happen. None of that took place, but yet it's posted all over Facebook. And again, we have enough staff that, we have enough people that can get the communication piece rolling pretty quickly. That is not actively involved in the, the situation. So again, that's, that's, that's my constructive criticism piece to this. We, as the parents, are sitting back, and at the end of the day, that's where, that's where we will take a beating, is that we don't communicate with what's going on. Parents need to know that their kids are safe and that the situation is being handled.
Thanks for that. I, I do believe it's very important. I will assure everyone on the board that everything happened as fast as it humanly could. And that's, that's, that's the truth. There's no delay plan. There's no delay. It was, everything happened today as fast as a humanly could happen. So, but I hear what you're saying. I, I know timing is everything, and social media, and the speed of everything is, can be nearly impossible to get ahead of.
Is, is email our only communication? Do we not have like a pool bank where we could send out phone calls? I mean, like, for the snow days and for that? Like, is email the only communication that we use in these types of events? Because again, I think today would have been a great day for an all-call to go out for this, for like what we would use for a snow day, like that, like...
But the all-calls would go to the houses, and a lot of people are at work, so we wouldn't get that...
No, it would go to whatever phone you have. I don't have a house phone.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so it would go to whatever that...
For us, it would go to the house.
Yeah, we have, we could certainly take a look at that. Again, our, our concern always is to make sure that we have all the factual information before it goes out. And things are happening at such a rapid speed. And the timing, like, today, part of the timing of communication was that we were getting close to students needing to be dismissed, someone would be leaving the school. We wanted to make sure that the people in the building felt that they were secure and that they had what they needed. And so Mr. Gephardt made an all-call to them. And so that was probably within minutes of, of the communication going out. I don't remember the exact time, but that was something that we were, back to what Tammy was saying, of just taking care of the kids in the building and making sure that they felt safe if rumors started going and they knew anything. Because that's, that's the hardest, if they were scared to like then exit the building or whatever, whatever their situation might be. But I, I hear you guys. I mean, communication is everything, and it is a huge priority. I mean, I think everyone knows that is something that is a top priority of ours. It, it's just, it's, there's many challenges often. So today was no exception.
And I know we've spoke to relationships, but I'm glad there was at least relationship enough for one student to feel comfortable enough to come forward.
Yeah, and that's huge. That's huge.
Thank you for sharing your candid view of a terrible situation. And this just doesn't apply to our students. But it's okay to ask for help. We all need it at different times of our lives. And as COVID has challenged us to sharpen our tools, and I don't think anybody in this community would have ever thought that this was going to broach our world. And this is our time to grow and learn, as you said, and reset. And but most importantly, you know, to our families in their community, to our parents, to our students, ask for help, please, if you need it, someone is here to help you.
Thank you. All right. Now it's your turn, Mr. Treasures.
My turn? Okay. Just two things real quick, or maybe three. Again, compliments on the superintendent and the team and the team at the high school for handling that situation the way they did with that. Secondly, I did give the board the update about the dental insurance program. That's a change. That's a positive thing that I think from some negative feedback we got over the last year or so of what was going on in our dental program, we're able to make that switch and save money, not just in one year, but across four years. So that's a very positive thing. Want to publicly thank Jennifer Brown, Kristi Ballamos, DeWilde Delittle, and Paula Wolf for serving on the committee with our consortium to help make that decision. That truly was the consortium wanting to get the input, not just from leadership, but from the staff and employees. And so that was not just done with our district, but all the districts that are part of our consortium to do that. And then there'll be more on that change that's coming up. It's going to be effective June 1st. And I think maybe the only other thing to dovetail on is the superintendent mentioned those community meetings that are coming up. And I know with the presentation that Megan gave, some homework was given to the board with that. But if, if, and I don't like to give the board homework or anything like that, but probably a, a, a task to follow through with is, you heard the superintendent said there's 100 seats at, you know, the first school that we're going to, and then there's, you know, open at the other. But we do need help, because those community meetings, those town hall meetings, a lot of people have different competing events to go to. So your ability to help bring people into those town halls would be great. So, you know, the, the biggest problem, if, if it's a problem that we have, would be a welcome one if we got more than 100 people that wanted to come to that meeting to do that. So I would just invite the board to help us fill that room when we have those meetings. That's it.
Thank you, Serna. Agenda item 6.0, Board Business, Board Comments. Mrs. Brinkman?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation tonight. Thank you. A little shaken up with your, your little speech there. It was nice to have the, the little work sessions here and allowing us to, to share thoughts with the staff. Reminder, at the end of the month, the high school is hosting their biggest athletic event, Howl at the Moon. Over the weekend, we were privileged to know that Mrs. Delaney will be honored and inducted into the Hall of Fame for her role in bringing the two high school boosters together and the fantastic job that she did doing so. Congratulations on that. We'd like to challenge everybody to come to the, to the celebration with us and, and celebrate Mrs. Delaney and due process. So congratulations. We look forward to celebrating you on the 25th. That's it.
This was, I, very thought provocative. I appreciated this type of stuff. There was lots of things I never had thought about. There were some that I've thought about. So I do appreciate this, and it helped to, to open up my horizons on these things. I continue to thank the community for their support and for the things that they do in supporting us in our mission and what we're trying to do. And again, I continue to appreciate you two for what you guys do and how you keep, keep us afloat and keep us moving in the direction that we need to go.
I think the biggest motivator for change is example, like, a good example, you know, personal example. And I am proud to be part of a group who is leading by example. I don't want to speak to it too much, because I'll almost start crying. That letter is just kind of a punch in the gut. And I hope that, I hope we can, yeah, I hope we can work towards changing that.
I thoroughly enjoyed our work session tonight. It's, it's us partnering together and leading by example, and it's helping us learn how our students need to learn. We have a story to tell, and we need to listen to our students and, and keep listening and listen and, and educate the adults about what our students need. Thank you for everyone for what you do day to day and for keeping us on track. Do we, do we have a reason for executive sessions?
No.
Okay. That being said, we need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Ramona, roll call.
Mrs. Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Patton?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Four yes?
And our next board meeting is...
The 21st, Monday the 21st.
Monday the 21st at 7:00 p.m.
Yes.
Thank you for your attendance this evening.